My name is Keith McIntyre, pastor of the Independent Baptist Church of Monizuma. And just appreciate the work of Park Without Reverse and their ability to connect people with government. And I believe that Christians need to be connected with government and be aware of what's taking place. We've come alongside them to help for a couple of months to get the town council and board meetings out. But would like to invite you, if you don't have a church home, to the Independent Baptist Church in Monizuma. Our services are Sunday morning at 10:30. We have adult Bible classes and children's classes at 9:30. If we could ever do anything for you, you can contact me at MIB.church. Thanks for watching.
Okay, I've got 6:30. We'll call the Marshall Town Council meeting to order. Uh, yeah. Papers for us? This park light poles, we paid out of that.
Yeah, but it's not all of it. He didn't, they didn't get the full funding. So they've got to figure out what they're going to do with the difference.
Okay.
So, but Nick's aware of that. Yeah, we talked. They paid, they funded $3,000.
Can you get the park screen fixed now?
Yes. And then four, we're going to put in new light.
It was a quick turnaround.
Yeah, I think I'm right on it. That's good. How far back is this UMAC?
You what?
How far back is this UMAC, Bill?
Uh, one of them is the Elm Street leak and the other one is a leak. Well, it was when we tore the meter at Aubrey's house.
Okay.
And they ended up having to put a new meter in to suck it.
Okay.
It was all missed out. So I haven't got Bill putting one on Main Street yet.
So the RMC one says park lights. Is this, is this for the poles?
Yeah, those poles. I should have the poles, not lights.
Okay. That, when that a $5,000, $3,000?
Well, it was supposed to have been something, I don't know what it was supposed to have been, but he didn't tell me. They funded $3,000 of it. But Nick didn't tell me what they were supposed to have funded. So there, he said, when we get everything set and done, he said, we're going to have to look at doing some more funding maybe because they don't know the total cost of the lights and everything once they get it up. So.
For some reason, I was thinking that's $5,000.
And that may have been what it was that he was expecting.
Yeah, that sticks my mind, $5,000.
But he didn't say what it was, but they funded only $11,000.
There's your son trying to call her right now.
I told him we had meeting tonight.
I told him the same thing.
Because he wanted to come up tonight. Report to foundation today.
Did it? I can talk to him. I've never seen that one evening.
I saw it, he did that.
You was getting ahold of sanitation department.
He had his pipes laying out there, TDC pipes laying out there, assuming he was going to dig around the lines.
We talked about one that's been doing that white house down the street. I was wondering what they were doing back there. I seen a big pile of them.
They're building a small house back there. Who's that?
At the Houston property.
Houston, remember the house has been in repair for a couple of years. Billy Houston lived there. That one, the guy started to work on the house and he got into the walls and it was, they were rotting.
Foundation was bad.
Got to them foundation, so he's going to take that down and put another house up.
In the back.
Take that down? There's a stack of lamps on that Porsche are doing twice as much as this. That's for the new house. For the new house? Yeah.
It goes in the back. Because that's L-shaped. So it's back in.
I do know it's L-shaped back there, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, Brady asked if he could go early this evening, so I'll go ahead and see what he has for us tonight.
I got court for Seabold case next two weeks from now. Um, he's going to be questioning a lot of things, so I need to get with Kathy and.
What day is that?
It's the 24th.
That's a Tuesday.
Yeah. If you guys want to come, anybody, you're welcome to come. He's not, he's not questioning anything about the case. He's questioning the validity of the board. So that's what he's trying to fight.
The validity, you said?
Yeah.
Why would he be fighting that though? I don't understand that.
It's, that's him.
Well, I understand it's him, but.
Could you even fight that in the Park County Circuit Court?
I have no idea.
I'm assuming Nick, will Nick be there?
No, that's, no, it'll be a prosecutor.
Oh, just prosecutor only?
Yeah. So he's going to, I mean, as long as I get someone that's, I need to get with you next week and get some paperwork that I can take and.
Now, I leave Thursday next week.
Okay.
And I will be gone all day Wednesday and I will be working in Rockville all day Tuesday.
That leaves Monday.
So Monday I'll be doing whatever needs to be done at home and up here.
Okay. I, I work Friday, Saturday, Sunday this weekend nights, so Monday evening maybe, just somewhere. Because I need to get everything in line to take up there because I got proof of everything. Which is not even really me that's like, my parts, there's nothing wrong. It's just, that's what he's going to try to fight, so Steve wants that stuff to be able to.
Now, I've already submitted all that stuff.
Well, this is, I'm just going to look for like, the records of the town, like, when people were like brought into office and stuff. If you have, it's just going to help. Just trying to cross the Ts and not the Is.
Okay.
If, if you have it. If you don't, then it's not that big a deal. But that's, if, if he tries to fight that, Steve can throw that on the table and judge can look at it and be like, yeah, this is.
It's not a big charge.
Wouldn't that be at the courthouse when we all take office? The clerk's office.
Work should have been everywhere.
Yeah, might be.
Because you had to do it on your own. Not once or twice I was in there, so.
They have, and he's been on the board, what they are, I mean.
Yeah, this, whatever's easiest, I just need that paperwork so he can slap it there and, because I can't testify to that stuff.
Right.
I, I don't know any of that.
Well, Park's probably not going to go digging for it though.
Yeah.
I think it's in a book or something.
But that's just it, they're not going to go digging for it.
But I can only attest, testify to what I did in the case. I can't testify to any of that stuff, so. It's easier to have it on record and do it.
Yeah, that way you can just point it out right there.
So, and then I drafted up an affidavit to get the campers off the trailer. I'm sending it to Nick. I was hoping he was going to be here today.
I talked to him about that today. And he said, I haven't gotten anything from you.
Yeah, no, I was just going to bring it tonight to that board meeting. I've got the, it's like, I wrote like a probable cause affidavit for that.
Okay.
So instead of the forms that we use, since we're taking something off of somebody's property, I want to have everything done the right way, so I wrote an affidavit for that.
Okay. So you will get to him?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to email it to him. I thought he would be here tonight.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
So I'm going to email that to him and, um, I'm still going to issue the ordinance violation with it, but to take stuff off the property to cross, to cover our backs, I don't want to, I don't want to have it done the right way. Because if we take something off his property the wrong way, we'll get sued and down, nothing.
Well, use those NCR paper.
Yeah.
Forms, make sure that we have one on hand and.
Can you, I'm going to buy a tray to put them in your office, so I can just, I know where they're at every time and you know where they're at every time.
You mean, so you can get to them later on?
No, like after I issue them, I'm going to sit the one for you in the tray, so you know where they're at.
And you just lay them on my desk and I'll find them away in my folder that I have.
Okay, yeah, whatever works.
And if they lay them on my computer, that's always closed, that's what anybody does if they're in there, that they lay it on my computer and then I pick up the paperwork.
Okay.
But I have a folder that I started back when and I keep it in my drawer.
Okay.
So, yeah, that works.
Couple of violations in town. Looks like one of them up here on 236, they've cleaned up some of that property.
Yeah, 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 they were issuing one. You talking about the one right by Overpack Gas?
Yes.
Yeah, they were issuing one.
Going with all the cars up here.
Yeah, so I talked to another town police officer, another town, and the way they do it is they tag the vehicles as abandoned and then they tow them instead of giving ordinance violations. So I ordered some of those tags and I'm going to do it that way instead.
Okay.
Do that on private property?
If there's an ordinance against it.
But then who pays the tow bill?
Well, either way, like.
I mean, if David comes and gets it, he's going to want paid when he gets it picked up. He's not going to want us to bill him or.
Well, he's going to do that either way. If we tow vehicles off private property and the owner's not going to do it.
Who's going to pay for it? We are?
That's what I would assume, yeah.
So we're going to pick up the expense of towing these vehicles from the people's property?
Well, I, I can tow them, but I can't make them pay for it, pay for the tow.
Well, we don't, and that's why we want to do that, for us to.
I think that'd be a question for Nick to see how liable, so if we end up and we pay it, because they're in violation of the ordinance, do we get to end up in fine them? More, to add for that extra expense? Because to me, that would be included in that fine, if we have to tow them, that would be included in it as well, because they didn't need it.
But then you got to go through the channels and keeping track and down the road, it's six months to a year of getting your money back.
Well, they can go get the vehicle out of impound since there's two and bring it right back to them, or we can't stop them from doing that.
The only way is again, I have heard the pocketbook at times, like.
I don't think we should put out the money for it and I don't, and David's going to want paid. I mean, whoever's going to do it, they're going to pay.
If we're, if we're towing them, we're paying for it. There's no way around that.
So I don't think that's right. I mean, I don't.
I mean, it's the way it's got to be, otherwise, poor and all, right, Coach? Just go ahead.
Well, you're going to rack up some money real fast, because that's not a $25 tow.
I mean, there's four cars right there that need towed.
Yeah, that's $200 probably.
That's probably more like $400.
See, if they're a property owner, you can put a lien on the property for that too. You're going to attach a lien to the property.
That's all Nick, but.
Yeah.
As I said, there's probably other stuff you can do once you.
I'm sure there's ways to get it back, but it's not going to be quick.
No, it's not going to be quick at all. But like you said, if we call the tow, we'd be.
Yeah, if we call them, we're paying for it.
We're paying for it, but then we have to have a way to put it back on them. And I'm sure there's ways to add it.
Yeah.
That's apparently our only option right now, so.
I'm not in favor of paying those out, but okay.
I understand that, but when you've got irresponsible people that are doing that and we have ordinances, we either enforce the ordinances or we don't have the ordinances.
All right.
And it's going to.
I mean, I can.
Next, we may have to check with Nick and see what you're, do you want getting your money back first before we start doing it and rack up a bunch of money?
Well, I can issue an ordinance violations now and not tow them, but that's not going to make them getting it off the property.
To make sure that, yeah, we are going to get the money back and if you put a lien on something, that's not going to do any good unless they sell their house or they move. And you take them to small claims court, you don't always guarantee you get your money back. You got, I mean, I've got water bills that haven't been paid that's in small claims court.
So even if you do get your money back, it's going to be forever.
Yeah, I mean, so.
Well.
That's the only thing that I know to do. Like, as far as law enforcement, that's the only two things I can do, is either issue an ordinance violation or tow it at our expense. That's the only two.
Yeah.
I think you, Nick, you issue the ordinance violation first. If it's still there, you have to issue another one, then that's when the towing should take effect.
So you want three ordinance violations then, before tow, so.
Or do you do two?
What do you normally do?
Well, usually, usually I just issue one ordinance violation and Nick takes cares, takes care of it. But the vehicles are hard, because if I issue an ordinance violation, I'm not towing it, you know what I mean? So I just issue one, so, because I've not been towing them. But now, we're wanting towed, so that's why.
Do you go, when you issue an ordinance violation, do you go talk to the people on whatever problem it's first?
Yeah, if they're, I give them one warning. I give them a warning, unless it's just a known problem and, but yes, I give, I talk to everybody one time and give them about a week, two weeks to take care of it. If they don't take care of it, then they get issued one. Overpack, I gave him one warning, the one by Overpacks, and then issued an ordinance violation. And then this guy down here in the corner, I gave him a warning, he ended up mowing his grass a little bit and trying to take care of things. So it just depends on how responsive they are, but nothing about it's quick.
No.
I think it's the same situation Rockville has been in, with abandoned houses and that and buildings.
I haven't heard anything about them towing cars down.
They're, they're towing vehicles.
Are they?
But whether or not they tow, you have the same problem if you go in on an abandoned house and take it down. It, it goes as a lien, but you don't get your money back right away and you won't get it back until it's sold. That building right there has liens on it and until it goes through a title search, that's when they're going to catch the liens.
Hopefully. Apparently they didn't before.
Well, it didn't go through title search.
Yeah.
They just, they just passed it down the line.
They just passed it down the line without a title search, yeah.
Somebody down the line is going to, it catches up. Yes.
Make Rockville sit on two or three houses.
Yeah. That's, that's just. If you have a tough enough judge, they could force a lien on the house to be paid or sell the property if you have a tough enough judge. Yeah. That's how it works. They can force a lien, they can force sell that property to satisfy that lien. It's hardly ever done, but it gets done once in a while. The other thing, we talked to Nick about and see if there's going to be an impound fee that that person's going to have to pay and can that towing fee be tacked onto that? Can they put it together?
Well, here's the thing that I, that we're going to have to get into too, is every day that a vehicle stays at heavy's lot, there's a payment. So I don't know if that would come to us and if that came to us, then that could be thousands, thousands of dollars. So that's, but that's something, I mean, like, usually I just do, I, I'm not the one that worries about payment, you know? I just do it.
Yeah.
But I don't want to do something with payment that you guys don't want to do, so. But I, I mean, obviously we want the vehicles off the property, but.
Yeah, because if you don't have a title, then you can't do anything with them, because they're legally theirs, but.
Well, they, that's the problem, problem that you run into is it's legally their vehicle, they can go get it back anytime they want.
Right.
At a cost.
At a cost, yeah. But we'll, we'll have already paid the cost of the tow, so the only thing they'll have if they go get it right after we tow it, then they won't have a cost, it'd be like five bucks. So.
If it sits there for a week, there'll be an impound.
If it sits there for a week, it'd be like 50, 60 bucks probably.
Then he's going to come back to us wanting that down the road.
Well, we'll get clarification from Nick on that. But I, I mean, we're either going to enforce the ordinances and what we want in this town or it's going to end up like what we're arguing about, these places that aren't being taken care of.
Right. And abandoned vehicles, one that doesn't have a current license plate, right?
Well, that's not necessary. Like, one that, if it has no license plate, you can do it. Um, if the license plate's been expired for a certain amount of time, vehicle's not running. But if the vehicle's not running, has a current plate, then I can't do anything about it.
That's why I thought, current plate, because otherwise they ended up and they're not going to go renew it.
There was one of those, I went there about a week and a half ago, one of them has a current plate, so I won't be able to move that one. But I mean, there's grass growing up around it, but there's nothing I can do about it. I can't, well, I can't tow it. So. And then you got to run into those like classic cars too, but you don't have to register that. There's a lot that goes into it.
Okay.
And one of those is a classic car, so you have to.
Well, there's no perfect answer, but it's a start.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll just have to see what Nick says about that.
Okay. Any other updates on anything that we need to know about?
Trying to think what all of the ordinance I issued. Um, I've talked to this Adam about four times since, but since I wrote the affidavit, I hadn't issued him my ordinance violation. I just keep talking and keep warning him like, hey, this is going to happen, this is going to happen, this is going to happen, and he doesn't care.
He doesn't care. He, he just snubs his nose, he doesn't care.
Yeah. So, and then the female had that one trailer on there. I told her I'd be towed in two hours and she didn't get it. I had to give her that chance, but she got it off, but now it's on that property. So she got it off the sidewalk, but.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a mean dog there that really makes it tough too. I can't even go in the gate, can't get anywhere. So I basically have to scream from the sidewalk.
We had a, a person that was here the other night at the town board meeting complaining about that dog. She's got a little grandson that she's worried about and she said, I will not walk down that sidewalk at all. So that's just not right. We've got to address that.
Well, that's.
And there's no fence there now where that dog was.
Yeah. The only thing that legally, like, since it's not gotten out, like, it comes right up to that fence and bites and growls, but unless it gets out, there's nothing I can do legally. I mean, there's not, we don't have ordinance violations on dogs, you know what I mean? Not that I've seen. Do you know of any?
Okay, so you're just going to build, is that the.
There's, there's ordinance violations for dogs running loose.
Yeah.
But that one's not loose.
Nuisance violation, does it fall under that?
That'd be like a, I mean, he has so many other nuisance violations there, I don't think the dog, and like even if I issue him one, it's, that's going to have to go through the court to get the dog removed. I can't just remove the dog.
Understand. Yeah.
So that's, that's, it's, that's tricky.
Okay.
If the dog gets out, then yeah, I can, or if the dog bites somebody, yes, but we don't want to wait, obviously, we don't want that to happen, but.
No.
There's, I mean, my hands are tied until something happens with that dog. Which, it's, it's sad, but right now it's in a fence and it's mean and it, it growls and it bites and I almost had to tase it the other day, but.
Yeah.
It's not gotten out yet. Well, the day it gets out, then.
Now, do you have the right to tase it when you go down there for your safety to try to talk to him if it's.
As long as I'm there for a legal reason, yes.
I wondered how that was.
Yeah, since I was going there for ordinance violations, yes. But if I was just there to stop by and just walking by, then no.
Okay. Well, keep, keep working on it.
Yeah, this, that one's not going to be an easy, short process. Fortunately, with it going to have to go through the court, it's going to be, I don't see it coming out anytime soon.
Yeah.
Same with those trailers, I talked to Nick about it and I think it's better for a court order to get those trailers out instead of.
That's what he was talking about. He was waiting for some kind of paperwork from you.
Yeah, the affidavit, that's what I was going to get in line.
Okay.
So I'll just send it to him.
Do that sooner than later and.
Yeah.
Let's keep things rolling.
Other than that, with him though, that's about all I can do.
Okay.
Was he in my office over the weekend?
Yeah, I was typing on that affidavit.
I assumed you was, but, because the chair was on the floor.
Oh, dropped all the way down, yeah.
I just had to catch it, I thought, I had that break, he was in here. I just, I just checked to make sure it was you.
Anything else for town?
I do have a guy interested in, so he wanted to be a reserve deputy. I told him, no, that we're not going to take on that responsibility, but he would be willing to do like code enforcement, like ordinance violations to help me out. And that's not a law enforcement officer, but it is somebody that can issue ordinance violations. We just have to get with Nick to create a ordinance for that. So if that's something.
Well, that was the option we had rather than having a, a town option.
Well, yeah, and it would be for free. It would not be for, no payment, so. Just somebody that wants to get into it, so. If that's something that, that way we can have both, I can go with him on a lot, but the, the small ones like grass length and stuff, he can, he can do those on his own. So that's just a, an option. He wouldn't drive the car around, he'd be walking, so.
Okay. Moving on, I've heard a number of complaints about the necessity to get 236 patched, where they put that new valve in and fix that water line that main. People are upset driving through that gravel and they bottom out in there, which I understand. I, I truly empathize with them, but.
It's kind of settled then.
I have, I have contacted our company that does our patching about a month ago and they told us, they told me, he said, I, I will do it, but I'm telling you right now, it's going to be a while. We've got jobs out several weeks and I said, okay. Uh, one person wanted to argue with me the other day, why don't you just find somebody else? Okay, there is nobody else that doesn't.
Try to get somewhere, small, small job.
Exactly. And that, this company that we use was very small at one time and now they're doing larger and larger jobs.
Yeah, so you're quite a, that's one of my questions I had wrote down here before I had bike station question.
Yeah. So I called them again today and they, they think it's going to be at least two more weeks before they can get here. Now, there's a possibility, because I talked to him, I said, what I need done is that 236 patch. And I understand the asphalt is, it's special because it's going on state highway and I need it taken care of. And the guy said, if we can get a half a day on a Friday where we finish early, we'll be over there and fix it. But he said, I think it'll probably be two weeks before we can put it in and schedule and get there. So that doesn't help us with the other patching, but it would take care of that. The reason I haven't had stone put back in there, because whatever stone you put in, they have to dig out.
That's right.
And one of the complaints is when the stone is in there and loose, it's hitting the front of the garage, the windows, the door and all. So darn if you do, darn if you don't with that. So right now, I think we'll just wait on that and if it, if the hole gets a lot worse, we'll go ahead and.
You know, because I think it'll be there in two weeks, you know, that's, that's not a deal breaker.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, if we drive down 36 in Rockville, if there's about four holes that you had to go around because they have the same issues down. So it's going to take a little time.
Yeah. This is really a problem, because when future X trucks are in there, they stick out in the lane, the north lane, and so now everybody has to drive right through that hole. It, it is what it is, it's a problem, but.
Should go around the block? I mean.
We, we know that, yeah.
You're going, you're going postal or you're driving through Marshall. Driving down the block, go to Marshall, darling.
But I think you know there's a big rut, you know, to kind of like, okay.
I just hope people are, are patient, we'll, we'll get it taken care of.
I mean, yeah, you can get, I mean, you're kind of stuck.
Yeah.
You don't have anybody else.
No.
And the state won't go fix it.
No. No. So anyway, if you hear anything, yes, we've contacted, we've, we've got somebody coming, but we don't know when. We talked about flushing hydrants and I, I did end up talking to UMAC two, three times about that and gave them some mapping. What I got from them the other day was, until they do it one time, they won't really know how long it's going to take to do the whole town. But they know where the, the hydrants are, they know who the valves are. They had given me a proposed fee of $1,500, not to exceed $1,500 to do that flushing. a proposed fee of $1,500, not to exceed $1,500 to do that flushing and exercise all the valves in town.
How many hydrants are there, Kevin?
Thirty-three.
Okay, I knew thirty something, thirty-three.
Does that include that one that's down there by firm?
Yeah.
Honestly, you look, I don't know who somebody is. I know you counted. I'm sorry, I gave you that.
That includes the ones out on 236.
Well, I was trying to break that down a little bit. So, yeah, if it's a hundred dollars each, that's thirty-three hundred. So, half of that again, yeah, that's sixteen fifty. So, you know.
But then you've got forty, fifty bucks. I don't think it's too bad. Then you gotta open up all the lids for all the valves in town.
That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think it's bad.
I don't either, because I mean, that's part of maintenance, and it's gotta be done, so I may don't.
It's, it's nothing.
Needs to be done.
That we've ever had to face before because the fire department always volunteered to do it, and that's just not working out well with manpower. So, I don't think it's bad. I think, my advice is that we try it and see how it goes. I know they will keep good records, and I know they do it for other towns, so it's not like the first, first time at it.
A lot of our hydrants are newer now versus the old, I mean.
Right.
So, that's an advantage. Our.
Yeah.
Our part. I don't, I don't like the bad price.
Okay.
I don't either. I mean.
Now, we're supposed to do that twice a year, right? Flush hydrants?
You're right, yeah.
I, I think that's what.
Recommended anyway.
Yeah. Twice a year, every six months, and twice a year, Thursday and Friday. Well, I'm not being smart, but I know some, some people look at it that way. We had proposed to them June and October, something like that, at one, at one point, was gonna work out for the fire department to do it a few years ago. So, it may end up being $3,000 to get through a year, but it's gonna be done.
How long has it been since it's been done, though?
Oh, probably a couple of years now.
Okay, I'd guess a couple, three years, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, hell, if it got done once a year, it's better than what we're doing now.
Yeah. Okay, I will, I will contact UMAC and tell them to get over here and get started on that. Probably won't take more than a day or two for them to do that.
That was thirty minutes of hydrant. I was throwing it out there, and you got thirty-three of them. That's an hour, be thirty-three hours, half of it again, you know, so. Sixteen hours, so a day and a half, probably. Could you ask them, maybe Kathy could post it on Facebook or something, when they're gonna do that?
Yeah, I think we'll.
They're on the board out here. Probably seem better, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, several people say it, maybe, you know.
Yeah. So, the swing set leg at the park was, was changed and it's back in, in original order. That is all of the old business I have. Anybody have any old business that we've brought up before?
I ain't got your two questions I had, so.
Okay. New business, I had some discussion with a member of the county council, and it was in relation to partnership Park County funding. And the question was, would Marshall consider helping through that funding? Well, you guys, you have worked with Cindy. She's fantastic.
Yeah, she, she could get.
And I would imagine that somebody that has that much experience and that work ethic is very likely that other counties will be looking at somebody like that. I know we got her from another county. And I don't wanna lose her. The council doesn't wanna lose her. The commissioners definitely doesn't wanna lose her. So, that was brought to my attention. The county council, I believe, will work to increase some of their, their funding. But the question was, she's been working with us on, especially the sewer project, would be, we'd be willing to do that. And I don't think we would've gotten nearly as far as we are on that sewer project without her. She's, she's that good. So, your thoughts on that?
So, they've asked us, and it either Town and Marshall, or they approached other towns like Bloomingdale or.
I didn't ask them, but they, there was, the county council was approached by some, some other civic leader in the county and brought it to their attention.
She already works with several of the other communities in town.
Excuse me?
Rose Dale and Monzuma, and she works with them.
Okay.
Already. And she's rarely not at a meeting that I'm at.
Yeah.
No matter what town it is.
She's been at our meetings. Is her capacity there, representing them or just doing a project that they're involved in?
Either or.
Okay.
But they were asking if we would pay part of her or pay her a.
I think it, it is making, yeah.
Is this a monthly or just?
No, no, just a one time.
Probably once a year.
A year, once a year.
Or maybe one.
Yeah.
Or is he divided or something? I don't know.
Yeah. I personally have to be in favor. I just know how much work, and she's worth every penny. And her work pays for her salary many times over in this county. I know it does. So, I, I think, I think we, we can probably come up with a number that we can probably live with and, and do the right thing there.
So, in, in talking to you, Kevin, they're, they're trying to retain her voice, you know. And it's about money. I mean, I bet they hate to say it. It's about money. How, how far up was the county, dogways, what they're gonna need to come up with a retainer, I guess is a better way to say it. Do we know?
I don't know what the number is that the council is throwing out there. I, I think it's quite a bit more than we'd ever talk about here. But I think it's not just salary. I think it's benefits, insurance, you know, just those kinds of things that are to be paid and need to be paid, and I think that's the realization that there's needs there.
Is she on county benefits?
You know, I don't know that.
I'd actually know. I bet you she's not.
She wouldn't be.
As I, I didn't know.
So, where does her funding come from?
Yeah.
Partnership Park County.
So, where does their funding come from? Is it from grants?
Certainly in part, but I don't know.
So.
And I think from other entities in the county, you know.
So, yeah, so what's the county, yeah, I guess, what are they asking for then? Is, are they gonna offer her insurance then? They're wanting help paying? I mean, I guess I don't know what they're.
I don't think they've decided that. I just think there's concerns there, there's needs there. There's other places, and I, I'm not, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. There are other places that would love to have a person of her quality, her caliber, and pay a lot more than Park County can pay, and we don't wanna lose her in Park County.
Which, I mean, that would, yeah, you could go to another city and get paid dealt, which probably wouldn't Rockville, but yeah.
As far as getting grants and fundraising, it would be a catastrophe for Park County to lose her.
Oh, it should, yeah.
Well, Kevin, I agree with you. She's, I think she does a great job. She's pretty valuable. I really believe that. Talked to her numerous times, you know, we've laughed, carried on, but it, it does, it's, it's part of life. It boils down.
Yeah.
The money.
And you'd wanna make sure your money's going towards that. I mean, I don't know how you would, or where you would.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't know how she's personally being paid now. She's not a county employee. That's my understanding. Is that right?
Yeah, I don't know if she falls in under the direction of the commissioners or the council for sure. I don't know how that funding. The council is working on funds, so they have something to do with, with her purpose.
I guess that's where I'm kinda at. I kinda need to have an understanding where it's coming from, so that way if somebody in the community asks me, why are you, why are you ended up in the town? I mean, I'm for whatever we could do to support.
That's what I needed to know first. Are you definitely in favor of it? I don't have a number, but if we are.
Because that's why I feel like we'll get asked, like, okay, so what's this for, funding? I mean, and where are they gonna come from? And I won't, I don't, I don't know where her normal salary comes from. I don't have anything. I mean, because I mean, she does do a lot.
Oh, yes. I will follow up then and say, we're definitely interested in helping. I think I have a capacity that, you know, we can afford. But I think it's a good question. Where, where does that cycle? Where's that gonna come from?
Because I thought they were part of some kind of other organization, business or something to do with the state. Does she go to meetings or something for that?
Yeah.
So, I mean, where does that?
I don't know.
I mean.
Okay, I, I'll put it in more simpler words. We'll just say, you know, somebody else is paying her. We don't know exactly who's paying her, but our local government wants to keep her as per se, and we're trying to entice her, you know, with maybe insurance, more money and stuff like that, but it's like actually on the cake of her job. Are these two separate fundings or?
I, I would imagine there's some government funding that comes through to, to help that decision. I think that's probably a realistic thought, but who sits down and writes the check? What agency? I don't have any idea. Okay. I will get back to that, in touch with that person at town. We're definitely interested. We definitely will help. We just have some questions.
We just need a little more information, so that way we can explain more what we're gonna end up in. Because we have to kind of have two. We're, I mean, what pot do you?
Yeah, and how long are you looking at doing it? So, are you just looking at doing this through your wastewater? Are you looking at doing this indefinitely?
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna be a questionnaire. We'll have to find, she's gonna need to know to know which.
Are you gonna, yeah, are you gonna look at doing it out of the town? You gonna look at doing it out of the water? Yeah, and then we may be something different than like our.
I don't, I don't know. Those are good questions.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's what I was wondering, would the state board of council allow us to do something like that?
Well, I, I don't think that's an issue. You can, you can pay for that kind of services.
I guess you classify it as, I don't know if you play, it wouldn't be a consulting fee.
It could be. Grant writing, consulting, yes.
But is it that tied with the project?
Excuse me?
And that tied with the project?
Not always.
Not always?
No.
I just figured they'd have to have a line item, a more specific where it, what part.
No, not all of it.
Like you said, because if it's coming from a project for the water, it would come out of the water. It wouldn't come out of the town. She's doing that, but if it's coming out of a different, for like the park or something, then that would be town.
I know we did two big grants for the fire department. One was the building, and at least two of them were trucks. And I worked on all three of those and did all the paperwork on them, but didn't get paid. We didn't hire a consultant because we poured the money right back in the department. So, I don't know. I don't think you have to have that consultant to every, every grant. Some surely would. Okay, I'll, I'll just.
I just, just a more of a clarity of what, where it needs to come from.
Yeah.
Or what, you know.
And then I'll have to check and see, too. Depending on that, I may have to do a 1099 order to show.
I don't know. I don't know how the other times.
How those, yeah. I may talk to Brandy and see if they pay her anything or what they do.
To see if they've got something marked out where they do something.
I know Brandy does a lot of her own writing, I think, of her grants. So.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll follow up. I think it's a worthwhile endeavor to look at. Halloween hours. I know we're way out in front of it. Last year, we were from five to eight. Halloween is on Thursday this year. Any reason to change that?
I always thought eight o'clock's kinda early, but I've enjoyed it the last couple of years like that. Eight o'clock, shut my light off, I'm done.
Yeah, I thought eight o'clock was kinda early, too. Everybody's running all over the place. It's like, okay.
Well.
Well, she did eight-thirty, but I wouldn't do nine.
Yeah.
Well, she did eight-thirty, but I wouldn't do nine.
Eight-thirty'd be okay for me, too.
If you're out on the street close to eight o'clock, there's nobody.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
Well, the other thing's gonna be depending on when Rockville's doing their big thing. That's the reason why, because it's, they go to Rockville.
Yeah, because they can hit somebody on the square when they do that square thing.
And I don't know when they're doing theirs.
Let's, let's post that at five to eight, if that's all right with you.
Although we could do, even discuss that the next week, because we won't post it until.
I know, but I don't wanna forget it. That's, I read something, somebody was talking about it, so I thought we'd bring that up.
I'll forget about that, Tom.
The, the next one is a real good one, snow flying. When did you start on that last year for bids?
I think I did that in October.
Okay. You might put that down, and it doesn't hurt for us to get a head on that to be done with it.
Not gonna say this year.
So, we're thinking Halloween on the 31st, that Thursday, five to eight, or go five, eight-thirty?
I'm, I would say five to eight. I'm just looking at what was on the street last year.
Okay.
At eight o'clock.
Because probably the others lined up and have something, so.
Yeah. I think somebody did eight-thirty last year, but we just, we don't have, but maybe 50% of what we used to have. It's like you said.
It's hard, yeah, there's hardly any.
I don't know with Sharon's capacity, if she'll want us to come up here and do the hot dogs or not, and she'll set, I'll ask her.
Okay. Well, this gets us out in front of things. What else do you have with town? Tom?
I think I'm good.
Tom?
Uh, Dylan kept going on. Well, Kathy got our samples sent in for the chlorination byproducts, TTHM and HAA5. Those came back great. We sent them into IDIM, and I checked their webpage, and they've got them logged, so everything's good there. And they still hang out there, that lead service line inventory. I'll let you take care of that.
Kathy, what do you?
I had the, the lead and service. I've almost got it all done. That's why I sent Dylan some questions that I had on finishing that up. So.
Okay.
We'll get, I mean, I don't remember how many hours it took me to sit down and do that, because I went through and found everybody's years for the most part. So, I had some of the questions, and once I get that done, then I can see.
Good.
So, that's good there.
So, any surprises going through that, or is it just?
No, they're all, they're all none, except for the newer houses. But, and he said they're pretty much would be for now, so. But, but at least we have all the years on, you know, what we could find and everything, so. Got our gallons there. They're not bad. We had a couple of leaks. Well, I guess we had one this month. Ronnie Cope had a leak, 45,000 gallons, but got it fixed immediately, and so. But still averaging about 20, but get back down to those tees. Of course, it was up last week, but it's been hot. You know, the kids are probably out playing in the water, and so, but that's not bad.
No, I don't think that's bad at all. How many crushers we got, Kathy? Water crushers?
Hundred fifty-five.
Hundred fifty-five.
No, that's not bad at all.
Well, we just picked up two.
Well, just kind of presented it out as 20,000 gallon a day. It was 150. You'll use 200 gallon a day, that'd be 30,000, so it'll run about 100.
And we know there's one on the north end, and she's got a leak, and she won't fix it, so she pays her $200 water bill. I mean.
People kill me.
So, get that fixed, and so, but it is what it is. As long as they pay it, I don't care. I mean, I do, but I don't, I mean. Monthly adjustments, have those. I'll do the water bills tomorrow and see where we stay. I only got a couple this last month that I had to send a nice little note, so. And here's July balances, but I didn't have those done last month, since I just got back. Here's August.
That opioid money go over to the fire department like before?
What's this part?
Huh?
The opioid payments, how, how long would it go for?
It's a long time.
Well, I just, cause I, I just started looking, it's ironic you mentioned that. How much that is, you know?
Yeah, we don't get very much, but yeah.
Five hundred and two dollars?
I mean, yeah, I mean, some of them get thousands.
Yeah, one's seventy-three dollars.
So, and one of them, they gave us, I don't think, might've been, it wasn't that one, yeah. Um, because they give me a wrong, either I get unrestricted and they sent me restricted, cause there's others.
There's others.
But yeah, I'll write a check to, to Jase, put it into the EMTs there, cause they limit what you can do with it.
And I just was real curious how long it's gonna be paying.
As, I forget how many years it said, I don't remember now. So.
So what is the restriction on it?
It basically is like for anything to do with drug overdose. Or classes, if you're having community classes, or like to go to the school to give classes to the kids about drug overdose and. So we can give it to the EMTs.
So it's, it's for anything like that or awareness of it then?
So we give it to the EMTs and they use it for Narcan or whatever they need on. It can go to the EMTs, I don't think he has to report what he does with it, was my understanding, but I just show those to the EMTs. On my report that I have to do. And that satisfies them.
Pretty simple.
That, exactly. Takes no, about five or ten minutes to fill out the paperwork that you have to do once a year, because that's where it goes.
We have used Narcan. Matter of fact, we have it on the front of the building.
I have no feelings about that.
I understand.
I just have to look at what you have to die.
Okay. Now we paid our last final payment to the bank.
For?
The road.
Okay.
So. That's off, will be off the books this year. Now with our budget for this year. We got to make some decisions on what you wanna do. Because, of course, my asphalt will be paid for, some with water, some with town, so that's kind of. More, almost with water, because they're doing Elm Street that was repairs from the water leak and then this one, but. The park is my, one of my concerns, because we've kind of been using this grant money. To pay for stuff we've been doing over there that Nick had. Cause we didn't have any money in there.
Right.
So. We gotta pay the park back this month, that is actually our, that, you know, stuff that we had.
Right.
So, right now, we've spent forty-seven hundred and seventy-six dollars of the parks, of the. Youth association's money. Now. On top of that is that sixteen hundred dollars that are in cedant pay. Now Nick's talking that they will do some more fundraising if need be, once the time comes, so he's willing to cover that. It's not gonna be a, that's not, I'm not putting that in with our stuff.
No.
So we've got forty-seven hundred and seventy-six dollars I have currently spent. On stuff here.
That has to go back to the park fund?
Right. So, we've gotta decide if we wanna take that out of rainy day, which my rainy day I budgeted four thousand dollars. And then fill the difference in towards end of the year with general fund. If we wanna do the concession stand siding. I can do two thousand dollars of it under the CCI, which is the other capital outlays. That is for anything to do with any upkeep of your buildings that you own. We don't, we always budget two thousand dollars, we haven't spent that, I think we bought a computer, you could do that too. So, if we're still thinking about that, that I can use the two thousand dollars for that siding on the building. So, we've gotta need you to start thinking what you might wanna do.
See, in the back of my mind, I've had that siding, uh, possibly being paid for from the township. Cause they committed to three thousand dollars towards the park. They would, they would actually write the check to do that.
So.
So I thought that was a good use of funds, it was something that was concrete that they could.
Right.
They could see what they were paying for, button mowing and.
Right.
Weed eating.
So if that's the case, you would have to worry about the two thousand dollars you're talking about.
Right, if that's the case, we just wouldn't spend the, the two thousand dollars on the budget for.
Right.
Out of the CCI camp. So. But I just wanted to put that out there, now, I am freeing up eighty-one hundred dollars at a general. That's on the budget because I take and put, um. The, uh. Fire department and emergency siren, that, I take that out of public safety now, because we weren't spending that money. So I thought, instead of tying up our general fund.
Right.
That can free up that money, so that money is there.
What do you have, what budgeted there?
Ten thou, public safety is ten thousand, but public safety doesn't go through the actual budget. That's a. That's not one that they care about really.
Okay.
But, but I can only spend that on certain things, is the problem with that.
Is that so much money per year goes that fund, or is that just like a figure every year?
It's a figure, so we can't keep doing that, because in public safety then, I've gotta watch down the road, because, um. Where's my public safety? I have fourteen thousand dollars in it right now. So, it's not heavily funded. And I did that last year, and then now I was gonna do it again this year, now next year I may have to watch on what I do, on how much money I get at the end of the year. So I gotta play with my numbers towards the end of the year. But in the back of my mind, I was thinking, yeah, that would free up some, that we could have some park stuff in our general fund, like we used to.
So if you do what you're saying then, we're gonna free up eighty-one hundred dollars, that looks like it's eighty-one hundred dollars, that's gonna come out of this and then. So that's gonna be approximately six thousand dollars in that fund, right there, the one's got fourteen thousand.
Right, 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 and they budgeted for twenty twenty-five. She went ahead and I don't know how she puts her numbers in, I, she budgeted another ten thousand dollars.
For that fund?
But that may not be in there, just like motor vehicle, she budgeted another twenty thousand dollars, and there's not gonna be twenty thousand dollars in motor vehicle next year. I don't know where she's coming up with those numbers. Unless it's because we could take it out of our own personal money, but we can't keep doing that.
Oh, you can't.
Because my motor vehicle right now, I've only got, um, thousand dollars in it. Now I got twenty thousand in restricted, but there again, you can only use that for building a new road. Now, I took, um, what was it, I took my five thousand dollars out of there to pay our payment. So I'll put me down to fifteen then, next month, out of that. But I don't understand how they plot, put their numbers in, cause they tell me what I can and can't put on my budget, basically. But, I mean, I throw some numbers out there and then she'll say, yeah, you can fund that, that's fine, after she puts it through. And we came under budget last year, so I'm anticipating, within reason, coming under budget this year, because we do watch what we do. But, and she said if you keep spending over, then you're not having enough money that's left over, and I understand that. So.
Yeah, it creates a deficit, so it does, yes.
Right, well, and this year we got hit with the, um. Audit bill we had to pay, so that dipped into our general fund coming in.
And that's something you never know, one can happen or, so it's.
Which it wasn't as much as the water, but yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just kinda wanted to put that out there to start thinking, cause we're gonna have to be moving, I'm gonna be moving some money around here down the road. That I have five thousand dollars of rainy day. That we haven't spent, that's been budgeted for twenty twenty-four, or four thousand, excuse me, for twenty twenty-four. That I could put somewhere if need be into the park to replace that money for Nick. And then we could fill in for general. But yeah, if you're thinking about the siding out of that township, then I won't have to worry about that as much. Cause I've, right now with, well, I'd say I have. I've, uh. Met my restricted and I've met my local roads and streets, um, this year. So those are done. And I may have to pay, depending on how I split up that asphalt bill, we may pay.
Public safety funds can be used for firefighting contractual.
Cause that's what that is, that contract is a.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and Brady can be paid through that?
They didn't mention that. Cause I questioned about that, but I will ask again, but they kinda leaned against not doing that.
Cause that's just coming out of town?
Yeah, that's comes out of town.
Yeah.
So his comes out of general, then?
His comes out of gen, uh, everybody's comes out of the general funds. And it may be that you may not be able to put any actual payroll in there, is what it may be.
I think that's true.
So, huh?
I think that's true.
That's just that, something makes sense, that, that was in the back of my mind after I thought of that. And like, see, I, I paid one, when we replaced those sidewalks over there that one time. I paid that out of the public safety, and I was told by someone that I shouldn't have done that, but they didn't catch it. So, but see, to me, that's public safety, cause she was fixing your sidewalks, keeping them from.
I normally think so.
Yeah. So they're funny about some of that stuff. But, so. And then to follow that up then, we, uh. Went ahead and this is what she approved for my twenty twenty. Five budget. Which is basically the same thing as. For the most part, is I, at the time, I still had the motor vehicle, or the. Fire department and emergency siren and my general, and, uh, so I just left it alone there for now. But. And we added the five thousand dollars in there for storm drains, which we still have, um. Twenty, twenty-six hundred dollars left, twenty-seven hundred dollars of this ARP money to spend for that, that we have to get. I've got designated for storm drainage.
What's the current contract with the fire department, you know how much that is, is it seventy?
Seventy-five hard, and emergency siren is six.
Is that much?
Six. Hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, they're listed right there underneath the other services on the left hand side. Motor vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
Or, I'm on fire. And like, we're not paying any internet, so, but I can still keep nine hundred dollars, and this, she doesn't care, I mean, she doesn't care about all this right here. She looks at this total, so I can do this however I wanna do it.
Yeah.
This is just what I have it broke down for rough ideas, I have to put in something. And so it's just kind of rough ideas that I go by on what it's gonna cost. My gas, my electricity, my insurance, that's all pretty accurate. Um, I do go a little above just to make sure there's not, um. Internet, we still haven't been paying any internet, but I left that in there, so. Trash removal, you know, miscellaneous. So we've got the hybrid rentals in there. Now, legal publications, five hundred dollars, I haven't done any of those really to speak of. So. So that's how we can kinda come in under budget on the general side.
Well, like you and I talked, I would like to see something increased on the fire department side. How many years back did we say we went, that this was said?
Was it before me? I looked it up.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, here, two thousand sixteen, I found seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So I'm gonna say I found back to two thousand sixteen at seventy-five hundred dollars. So it's been that way for eight years now. And we write that contract in December, so.
Well, I would love for you to be thinking along those lines, uh. The amount of runs that the fire department makes now is going out of sight. We just went over two hundred and four runs this year. And we've got a third of the year left. And most years, we've gone twelve months on about two hundred and twenty runs, two fifteen, two twenty. And so that's costing a lot of extra fuel and supplies. Been nine years old now, I think we gotta, we gotta look at doing something, I just wanna see how much you think we can do.
So. I mean, I don't, what, if you're, what you're thinking in the back of your mind.
And I see where you're driving at, cost wise.
Oh, I do too, I hear the laugh.
So. I'll just say Marshall, I'm about to rest him, but. They're under contract with the county as a first responder?
Do we run a contract?
I think they're under contract with the county as a first responder.
Emergency services, it did spell that, it's just emergency services, yeah.
And all of their funding is directly to them on whatever he gets with the county, or what the fire department gets?
Well, well, it doesn't come from the county, it comes from the townships.
Oh, his just comes from townships, he didn't have to pay them down?
No, town and the townships, everything.
Town, township.
Okay.
It's on, it's on a contract with each one.
So, okay, right. So, okay, my, my real question was, we're, we're talking maybe you think about more money, but does the county think that way too? I mean. That fire department operates off money from the county and the town of Marshall, what funds they raise.
Right.
Elsewise. Has the county considered increasing what they're going to give to the township for the fire departments?
There's been some discussion with township trustees.
So I'm saying the trustees could be the ones.
To try to increase.
And they're getting less of your budget.
Yes. And some of them have increased theirs since we had increased ours back in sixteen.
How many counties do they have? How many townships are they contracted with?
Uh, Washington, Howard, Sugar Creek, Green. I think that's it. That's probably it.
But, and then some of those, I mean, probably don't have very big.
Oh, sure.
Dollar amounts in their township like.
They don't. You're, you're exactly right.
I mean, you're not Bellmore sitting out there with the big lake that's got the big bucks.
Well, Sugar Creek way up there. I mean, they don't.
Yeah.
Far and few people.
Sugar Creek has more than what you think. It's Howard that doesn't have it.
But that's true because there's a lot of people from Indy moving up there that building stuff.
Sugar Creek goes over across forty-one up in there.
Up in there.
And goes all the way to the county line north. Yeah, it's.
I guess it is.
It covers, it covers quite a bit. And of course, fuel costs. When you increase your runs by thirty percent, your fuel costs are going to go up by thirty percent.
Just to say the park didn't compensate you for it.
No compensation from.
That just floors me.
Well, they don't even have an emergency service, anybody in standby out there.
Yeah.
To me, that's kind of like, we're using our money. The county's using, well, I know that's a sort of subject with the council and stuff, of the county.
Well, I think there's some legal requirements that you have to cover state, state facilities. Like state police and the Marion County, they would cover the buildings, government buildings and things there and not be paid specifically from the state of Indiana. No, the state of Indiana does not pay. DNR does not pay.
Right. And they don't have anything set up for any type of emergencies either.
No.
You know, I can't imagine what the feels right now of what the fuel is costing you guys with the prices. Because you don't know what it is now.
I don't know right now what it is. I can find out. What it is.
So, I mean, I agree.
What do they deal with? Do you have a tank over here or do they go?
It sits outside of Kenny's down there.
I just don't thought about that.
We put it down there years and years ago so that we could watch. And not have it up here, but it's never been moved.
That's a good idea. But yeah, I mean, if things stay the way they are, then yeah, I mean, I don't foresee any reason why we couldn't update their contract.
Well, equipment alone is just.
And they do fundraisers themselves to try and make money and I know that, that, yeah, every little bit helps on what they do.
So Kathy, if we raise that, that means you're going to need to take from somewhere else.
Yeah, but I can tell you those numbers, like we may not have much for miscellaneous. But like I said, I just kind of, I put, put the numbers in when I get into Gateway at the end of the year. I mean, my gas, electricity, that stuff's kind of fit, but then there's a lot of it gets lumped together. So they don't.
Well, if you shift that over to public safety, that eases up some funds in the, in the.
Right, right. But then I wouldn't always have that money every year because that's not funded heavily.
Yeah.
So I would have to rely on this sometimes.
Right.
To pay. And see, we may not have any storm drainings for a while since I've got that other money to pay out of. And I have been paying out of there, but yeah.
Okay.
When that time comes, then yeah, we'll have to start using that.
And which money is that coming out of the storm? Currently you said you got set aside for storms right now, drainage.
All that we got left is twenty-seven hundred dollars in that fund up there.
That came out of the.
Of that ARP money.
Oh, that's okay. It was the ARP money.
Yeah, we paid one or two things out of there to UMAC.
Yeah.
So, so the next month at the October meeting, we will vote for this. Must be here. October then.
Well, I'd say it'd be October.
First.
Third.
First.
First.
Tuesday. So.
So you got four valves now about professional services, what's that in the compass?
That would be, like if we had Ronnie come in and do something for the town. Anybody like that that we could hire. My, I see mine's not paid. Jason does anything for the town, he gets paid out of that, so to speak. That's, I put that in that category. It's anybody that I have to hire to have anything done. The, I guess I paid the Kings out of park. If I hadn't paid the Kings repair out of the park, he would have went in there.
Isn't that kind of what we use for Brian at times when he's done some stuff?
Yeah, we'll put him, yeah. If it's not in the park, but yeah. But same thing of any professional person that we have come in that you have to hire. I just have that down there as. And that's a little bit different than your miscellaneous of your repairs and.
Right.
So. And then other than that, I just have the thirty minutes from last month. Yeah, I hate to use this, this must be mine for my folder I didn't. Oh, and P and B sent me the check the next day and that was all taken care of. And I will be gone from this, the twelfth to the nineteenth.
This month?
I'll be having my phone, so if anything comes up. Heck, I talked to people in Alaska.
I'll be gone the twelfth to the twenty-third.
Oh, same time, basically.
Holy cow. I gotta go somewhere. I don't work, but I gotta go somewhere. Now we're starting to pre- decides job, not too far from your house on the sixteenth. I want to tell you, how do you get down to your house anyhow?
By then it'll be all, all prepared.
By the sixteenth.
By the sixteenth? I doubt it. Well, last time I went there, it's across from the townhouses right there, a little block house they go down to, nice two little cars, just sort of. Across from the townhouses right there. Well, I went to the last drive on the townhouse, went there, shot across, right across the road there. I tried to get there today, hell, I got them all blocked off. So I don't, I don't know how you're getting down the road, is what I want to know.
And are you, what is it, Pennsylvania?
Pennsylvania. I know Pennsylvania, yeah.
You turn, come in Pennsylvania, you can turn there.
Okay.
And drag down the middle of the road, like you own the place.
Well, that's the difference, see.
You got to stop and think where you want to go in town.
That would be true there.
It's real tough, what I'm trying to tell you. I had a trouble tying back it up today where I was down there at.
The Dolores Elmore's house sold.
Yeah.
For a lady from Texas bought it.
I saw that. Whose house?
Dolores Elmore's little house.
Oh, yeah.
And they're going to use it as a rental. And.
A rental from Texas?
No, she must have, she's from around here.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but she lives in Texas. They must have numerous houses because she has a project manager. But they're going to use it as rental. And a house found out about it, I don't know unless Lena happened to know her, that's a possibility since she graduated from here and everything. And Liz B's house supposedly sold. The white house in the corner. So.
On a far corner?
Across from Scott McElwalt's, whatever his name is.
Sam and Graham.
Okay.
We used to call the FBI house back in the day.
Where Jamie Hoover grew up at, is what you're talking about.
No.
All the other houses. Kathy Reichman grew up at, Dana Reichman, yeah.
So.
I'm on the wrong corner.
Yeah. But, and then the Blaine Lake, Brenda Spurte.
She what?
Brenda Spurte.
She did?
She had cancer. Didn't know that.
Who's that?
Brenda Spurte.
Vicky Spurte?
No, Brenda.
Oh, Brenda.
Owned the building here.
So, so that was a house down here.
Hey, what's that Mizzou house up there Clark's lived at?
Oh, that's there, yeah, nursing home.
They're, yeah, they brought a dumpster in today, so.
Huge dumpster.
Cleaning it out.
Well, I wonder when I seen the vehicle like parked in the drive and it looked like it, some moment it was like.
We've been there a lot of times.
She didn't come get up and, yeah. Or they just go clear it out and sell or what?
It's a
I don't have.
Daughter, I guess the daughter that's coming in.
The son died, right?
Might be.
She has a son. He's a, which, part professional services. He's a, one of the main guys. I was going to tell you what he's first name was, I might just went blank. Clark's his last name though. Donnie Clark, geez, wow.
Because they put him in nursing home.
I don't know why he's been there in the life space or off the car.
Yeah.
Hadn't been moved.
And I need to probably get the water.
For some reason, I don't know why, but I thought about sneaking down there and trying to move it, but sometimes people don't appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, they don't.
You kind of, kind of got to watch what you're doing.
Yeah. So.
No, I don't know if she had cancer.
I didn't either.
Where are they are? Anything else?
Nope.